Calling the regular council meeting of Monday, November 5th, 2022 to order. Please rise for the fudge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get approval of agenda?
Madam Mayor, I approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And approval. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, Monday, November 21st, 2022.
Madam Mayor, I approve the minutes for the regular meeting, November 21st, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Any nominations for recognition?
Can we recognize a, can we recognize a whole board? Because I think the Chamber of Commerce did a great job with getting everything put together in bad situation. I thought they really pulled it together for our, for our lighted parade.
Absolutely. Yes, very much so. Any other nominations? Okay. Certificate of recognition. Naomi, do you like to come up?
This certificate is appreciation of thirty-seven years dedicated to the recreational board. So thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. All right. You don't have any citizens business in writing. Citizen business verbal. Number one, Tom Streeter, Mondale Airport, new hangar.
Oh, good evening. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Uh, we're here to discuss some issues, sort of issues of some updates, I guess, as far as our hangar project go. And I would like to bring up our spokesman for this evening. This is Don Cooksey. For those who aren't familiar, he's our airport board chairman. And also, we answer any more questions or for support, we have Alan Parks and Garrett Ford also here. So I will let Don start. Okay. Any other questions he can't answer, I'll be glad to answer. Try to.
Thanks, tough. Oh, Madam Mayor, council people and guests. We come today, or this evening, three, three things. One, we want to talk a little recap about things that happened in the past. Then we need something from you now, and brief look into the future. Some three or four years ago, with the sponsorship of the Allah Hangar Project, we started at the Newcastle Airport. It's about, about half of the, half of the project was done at that time, which in, which involved the building of taxiways so airplanes could get into this hangar that were, that we geared up for. At this point, we have the ability to go after the federal funding for this hangar at a, at a two percent match to y'all. Which brings us here. This evening, what we need from you is there's a task order floating around here. If we can get you all to sign that, we can proceed on with this project. Comes with a, uh, two percent of the engineering costs. It's on a piece of paper there. It's just shy of, they could say eighteen, nineteen hundred dollars. I don't know if you want us to put it in our, in our upcoming budget, or how that should be worked out. After this order is signed and presented, the engineers will go ahead and apply for the grant. It's quite a process. It'll take some time. We'll get updates along the way. The, uh, on down the road, when this project is completed, oh, in about a year, construction could take place late in the summer of 2023, I suppose. The whole big ugly number is, uh, all in is, is no more than nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars with a two percent match to y'all. And that is what we know now. Do we have any questions we can answer for you?
So who are the hangers for individual private?
Um, that, that's a way to put it. Transit airplanes that we have run slap out of hangar age at the hangar, at the Newcastle Airport. There is, uh, I think if we struggle, we could get one or two airplanes inside at this point. So this will open up the field for, uh, for additional airplanes to live at the Newcastle Airport at this time. If somebody comes in on a temporary plane, temporary basis, wants to spend two, three days a week, whatever, we don't have a place to put.
And so they'll be munting these from you, or?
Yes, 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 yes. They get, they get rented out.
How often do you have planes that come in that need somewhere to restore?
Regularly. Almost everybody that comes in and spends the night, or lands and looks out at that thunderstorm approaching the airport, is looking for a place to put their hangar airplane inside.
What are you proposing to rent an hour out? Could it be a good revenue?
Well, I hate to spit a number out at this point. We're studying that. We're studying that pretty hard, but we're not prepared to spit. And we don't, haven't come to a conclusion on what they should be worth.
So with the engineering and everything, sort of like the, uh, we, the city would be on the hook for two percent of that nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
At the end, yes.
At the very end?
At the very end. When you get all done, look in the rear, rear mirror. That's what you'll be in. If we spend the entire nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. And then we could also be on the hook for two percent of the engineering costs?
Uh, included in the nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, okay. So the eighteen or nineteen hundred bucks would be for the engineer to do this?
Yeah, the local match for the engineering.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think there's a lot to read here, and I'd like to read it before I do any really big discussion on it. And I might for the attorney to look it over as well. Are you okay with us tabling it until our next meeting so we can have time to look at it? Or is there a timeframe on this?
I think we've got at least one more meeting going to.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless someone on the council has something different on?
This is the first time I've seen this too, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, I would appreciate it, sir, if we could just table it until next meeting.
Should we, uh, should we plan to get on the agenda for next meeting?
Uh, yes, we'll have Stacy get you on that agenda. And then who should we call if we have questions? You?
Mr. Streeter, can you come here? I will, uh, if I can't answer, I'll be best with the engineers. They, they've already got the ball rolling at this point, and I can answer the questions. But I'll definitely get in contact or have them contact you if we have any questions that I can't answer.
Okay. Okay. So she has your number, so we'll get her.
Yeah. Uh, and this is a couple of things. We, as far as the usage of the hangar, uh, we already have possibly three people on board. We don't have in writing. It's because the hangars aren't built yet. So, but we already have three people that are interested in, in, uh, running, running the hangar on a full-time basis. And, uh, and so with advertisement throughout the hills, mainly that's the kind of the area we're covering, uh, there's a good chance that we could fill them up. Not guaranteeing anything, uh, right. One of the reasons, uh, the hangers, uh, were of interest in it was because of so many people calling all the time wanting to hang. And there's people, one of the guys I had interest in, he was used to Custer. And, uh, and there's just no place. He has to keep his airplane parked outside and doesn't want to do that. And all the other airports around it all filled up. And there's just no room. And so the people just call. And so I say we have, we have interest in, uh, at this point. And, uh, I say nothing in writing, but there is, I don't foresee any, you know, just not getting used, if that's what it's all about.
Has the county already given consent to their shares?
Uh, we go to them tomorrow. They're, we just kind of got this, had our last board meeting on the twenty-second.
Which brings up, I think, a mention. We've already, you all are already in the project about fifty percent at this point.
Yeah. We, the taxiways, which were finished in 2020, uh, was about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, of which the city and county both contributed two percent to that too. So, so we've already, uh, we've already done that part of it.
Is that the expansion?
Yeah, it was part of that. Yeah.
Okay, I remember that. Well, thank you for giving us some time to look it over. And if we have questions, we'll definitely give you a call.
You bet. Feel free to. You bet.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, moving on to citizen business verbal. Bruce Perkins extended hours for New Year's.
Yes, thank you. Uh, we haven't done it for quite a few years because of COVID and everything. And we're hoping to, how you say, start bringing more people out, generate revenue. So we'd like to extend our hours on New Year's. What I would like is a twenty-four hour permit starting on December 31st at midnight, going to midnight January 1st. And what that does, it covers most of our business hours anyway. But we're hoping to use just a few hours from like two o'clock, maybe about four or five before we have to close up. Uh, that's it.
So, um, they're asking for twenty-four hour from December 31st midnight to January 1st.
I mean, that we grant Perkins Tavern, um, they're extended hours from midnight the thirty-first to midnight the first?
Yes.
And this does not include open container?
No open container. No. Just, uh, just extended hours. Uh, and any, you know, those people that have liquor license can still use it, I believe. Anything in the city limits, I believe that anybody can go do it. If I ask for it, that means it covers everybody, at least, just like the open container does. So if anybody else wishes to participate, they may.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
All right. Thank you. Well, hopefully you have a good time, safe time. I hope so. We, we got a safe ride. And, you know, at the end of the night, we got two people who will be available for rides and everything. So hopefully it works out well. Thank you.
Um, we're going to mayor council number reports, but we're going to start with number two, chapter fifty-six permit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I've been in correspondence with biologist Sandrini with Wyoming, uh, game and fish. Uh, upon completion of my study for the, um, the deer count in town, uh, he came up with a rough number of about, he thinks there's about two hundred and ten deer within the city limits. He thought it might be a little bit high, but he, uh, he thought it, it seemed pretty fair, because I came up with eighty-five deer in my, in my count, uh, between gray addition, the avenues, getchel addition, saddle sub. Uh, so his suggestion was, um, to, uh, if we were to move ahead with the chapter fifty-six permit, that we would remove about seventy-five deer from the population. Um, I called public works director Stumpf, or public work supervisor Stumpf earlier today. And, um, uh, I've also been in correspondence with the Flying V. Uh, the Flying V was gonna charge us about, uh, ten dollars per deer per day to hang them in their cooler until they, uh, clear the chronic wasting disease tests. But, um, uh, when I talked to, um, Greg earlier, he said that we could possibly use the, um, ball field shed to hang the carcasses while they cleared the shed, or the, the test. So, uh, that way, uh, it wouldn't really cost the city any money, uh, while they were clearing the, uh, the, uh, chronic wasting disease test, which usually takes three to four days. Another suggestion from biologist, uh, Sandrini was, um, that we would put in for the permit after the first of the year. And then that would give us a year from, um, January 1st to, uh, December 31st to cull the number of deer that we need to take. Um, that number seems kind of high, but like, uh, when you have a large population of critters, um, uh, that first initial pass is, is going to be a larger number. And then for years after, if we continue to do the chapter fifty-six, um, it would be more of a maintenance, um, uh, culling of the deer. So, um, they would knock that number back, depending on how much we ended up counting in the next, in the next years. But?
Would still be during hunting season, though?
Um, yeah. So, uh, the idea would be to, if we did put in for the permit, we would start January 1st, um, you know, and maybe go for a couple of months, uh, while it's still cold enough that we could hang the carcasses safely, um, and, uh, they wouldn't spoil or anything. And then, um, and then we would continue again in the fall after hunting season. So, um, I look back at some minutes that we took from our meeting in March, uh, when we first started talking about this. And, uh, at that point, there was forty-four calls for service, uh, for deer-related issues. Um, and the city shop, when I worked on the city shop, we had to haul, you know, dead and diseased deer out of people's yards on a, on a pretty regular basis. Um, it's, it wasn't really fun to do it during the summer months. So, um, I, I feel like this is something that we should do in our town in order to help regulate the population of the deer and to have healthier animals in the population. So at this point, I would move that we, um, work with biologist Sandrini and, uh, move forward with the chapter fifty-six permit.
Can I ask, ask questions?
I have a question. Do you have to wait till Thursday, second?
Okay.
All second, so we can talk. Okay. We have a motion in second. Further discussion from the council?
You said harvest seventy-five first time?
Yep.
So does that mean you have to get seventy-five?
No. So, um, that was, that was the maximum.
Right, I understand that. But are you gonna keep killing till you get seventy-five?
Well, the idea is to try to get to as close to seventy-five as possible, because that's, uh, that was to, um, to help with the, the number of fawns that are going to be born and to, to try to offset that number. So, yes, we would, would try to get to seventy-five, but, um, but it doesn't have to.
Did you already tell, tell us that?
No. So that, that's something else that we're gonna have to work for, or work at. Um, there's gonna, there's some logistics involved. So?
I don't want you in my yard shooting.
No.
From what Sandrini said is they kind of bring them to an area. Um, and then Sundance, right, uh, had chapter, or still has chapter fifty-six, and they had law enforcement.
Yeah, and it was law enforcement. It was the city police that did it. And now there isn't a city police in Sundance. So, um, I can't remember the name of, uh, the company, but they're trappers and outfitters and I can't remember who this, but they basically get the city contract and they take however many it is. I don't know what the biologist said, but, um, who would be the choice there? And I assume there's someone like that around here, just to keep it local. But, um, that would, that would be another question, because we would need to have some sort of agreement in place, just in case, you know? So, the idea, and some of the other communities that I visited across the state, they, uh, used members of the public works department, like Matisse uses, uh, the public works department. Um, I spoke with, uh, Greg earlier. He said that that's a possibility, but we have to name specific people, and they will be named on the chapter fifty-six permit. And I felt like leaning on our police department when we're so understaffed, um, wouldn't be fair to the police department. So I felt like if we worked with the public works, and I would be interested in helping out if, if, uh, we couldn't generate enough people to get it done. Um, because I really feel strongly about this, and I'd like to see it get done.
Uh, questions from?
Garrett Morton. Uh, did biologist Sandrini mention anything about the mule deer numbers around this area?
No.
As far as, as far as had they been up or down or anything like that? I was, I was just trying to weigh out the idea of maybe of transplanting or something like that.
Yeah. Um, we could talk about that with him a little bit more. Um, but the, uh, um, he didn't, he didn't mention anything about, um, specific numbers of specific species of deer. Uh, he just, uh, um, based his estimates off of what is currently living within the city limits.
Yeah. You mentioned hanging the meat safely. So I'm presuming that, um, you have plans for the meat, or is it belongs to whoever shoots it?
Oh, yeah. That's all part of the chapter fifty-six permit is, um, so the, the deer would be hung while they awaited the chronic wasting disease test. Then the carcasses are donated, first come, first served, to anybody who wants the meat. So if we have any needy families in town, we'll put out the notice, and then, um, they're allowed to take the deer away and process it. Um, uh, that was another way to avoid having to pay for processing costs and a further expenditure to the city, was that we could just donate the whole carcass to the family, and then they would be responsible for, um, for processing their own animal.
I, I believe that you probably have plenty of hunters in town that would go right along with Sandrini and, you know, on a directional hunt like that to, you know, to help out. And, and that would be a way to take care of also the, you know, the, the shooting instead of relying, say, on the police department or just a official game or anything.
Per the chapter fifty-six, um, permit, there, there has to be specific people that are named specifically to, to carry out the culling of the deer. So?
Who would, who would we have to, I guess, talk to to get onto that? And what would be the requirements of the hunters to be on that?
Um, that's, that's a bunch of good questions.
I, I think that would be probably Sandrini's department, wouldn't it?
Um, yeah, because, um, so I was to understand that I was supposed to fill out, um, an application, but there isn't actually an application for chapter fifty-six. It's per his recommendation.
Okay.
So he will, if we tell him to move forward, then he, he'll tell his superiors, and then they'll issue us the permit.
Okay.
Um, the permit comes with, uh, the number of tags that will be placed on specific animals. I mean, it's, it's kind of a thing. Okay? There's, there's a lot to it.
Yes, I know.
Um, but after, I feel like after the first year, that it'll become business as usual, and, and we'll be able to, to just move forward, you know, and, and everybody will understand what the old lay plan and how we'll do this.
Thank you.
Um, I do believe that, um, Sandrini can't tell us who to use. Um, it'll be something that we would have to, uh, make a contract with, uh, individuals, uh, to make sure that safety, liability, you know, got this covered.
But, but at the same time, it would be a supervised hunt.
Yes.
By fishing game. And, you know, individual hunter would go along probably with them. Just because they do deprivation hunts the same way. So I figure that's probably the same criteria, though, which is asking how to maybe get involved in that to help out.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
I'll be in touch with biologist Sandrini, and then maybe I can ask some of those questions before we move forward with the permit.
Um, thank you. We're gonna go, uh, back to number ones, wearing of the, the least cheap, chocolate moles. You want to come on up? You ready?
Sure.
I can repeat after me. Oath of office, State of Wyoming, County of Weston. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Charles Bowles.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm that.
And affirm that.
I will support.
I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
That I have not knowingly, uh, violated any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Number three, on mayor council number report, ordinance number six, series two thousand twenty-two, on its third reading, which, uh, heading reads, no ordinance amending City of Newcastle zoning ordinance, number thirteen, series nineteen eighty-five, providing an effective date. I do believe, um, I did receive an email in regards to, uh, the chickens. Um, this email reads, I had the opportunity to speak briefly to Linda Hunt about the possibility of in-town chickens. I spoke to her about my concerns. I worry that it will be an added responsibility for the community officer. That being said, how will homeowners be held accountable on the welfare of the chickens? I recall past issues, Earl Pass, when helping Mammy, Mammy, um, get the adopted out, the cleanliness of the area, their housing, how many will be allowed, et cetera. I just worry that they will not be properly cared for, cleaned after, and become a neighbor in town recently. how many will be allowed, etc. I just worry that they will not be properly cared for, cleaned after, and become a neighbor in town nuisance versus anonymous asset. I do not live in town, but being a realtor worry about a few of these items causing issues for uh the town's overall care. Uh Julie Domino.
I move that we uh move forward with the uh third reading of ordinance number six, series two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Thank you.
Was that Dawn?
Uh, yes. Uh, Don Stevenson is on speaker deck. All right, uh moving on to number four of mayor council member reports, uh Little One's Child Care Parking. Um, there has been another uh incident with the parking in front of Little One's Daycare, um which almost caused another accident. Um, community service officer did talk with YDOT in regards to uh the city posting signs that either had a limited time of parking or no parking at all during the during the hours of the daycare.
A couple of citizens have been in contact with me too, I don't matter about, um almost getting hit. Uh, and I guess I went and spoke with uh Amanda Dixon as well, and she uh she couldn't be here tonight. Uh, she wanted to be, but they got the program. But uh she she wanted us to do something about it still. Um, uh she said that the the folks that live at that residence that park all those vehicles there uh did pretty good for a couple of weeks after she asked them about it. Um, but now they've gone back to parking. And one of the problems is they park all their big stuff on that side of the street. They said it wasn't as bad when there was just small cars, but when they park the big vans and and stuff like that, then it limits visibility and causes a safety issue. So, I told her that I would uh get on the agenda with this this evening.
Um, I know that we can speak with uh Michelle at the Sheridan office as well um if we have any questions in regards to um posting signs. Um, but Nakona told that YDOT did say that they don't have an issue with it, but I know we have an ordinance and stuff that we would have to change and look at. Is that correct, Toda?
Um, there's a couple, three places that could do something with it. Um, the one does state that the council can by a vote prohibit parking on the streets in town. So, you just have to define what section of the street is going to be in motion.
So, if we prohibit parking, that would prohibit it for the parents dropping off the children as well?
Yes, that's the that's the one. Or you can isolate it to like half blocks, just typically what they're either full block or half a block. So, from the alleyway to through the Little One's Daycare would also cut off the parking if ever established as well. Um, you could set hours of the day that uh parking is not allowed or two-hour parking. Um, there is another one that you can limit. Can't remember which one it was. There's about eight different ordinances at play, so I apologize. I didn't get a chance to read much of it today.
I think uh Councilman Stevens say has something to say. Go ahead.
Hey, Claire, um I did contact uh Scott Taylor, which is our area um YDOT engineer. And he even spoke to us, you know, about the project they got going on. And uh he did call me back today and sent an email to me after I got off the phone with the um concerned citizens about the their business had been occurred. And uh Scott, when I talked to him today, um kinda asked him, you know, what the possibility of what what could be done on that, being that it's a state highway. And obviously, you know, Scott said that the um the state's position, um they were aren't neutral in the situation. But where it is within the city limits, they didn't have a problem with us doing whatever we need to do to alleviate this problem. Him and one of his other colleagues had looked this situation over, which I had emailed him, and they also agreed with our assessment. Um, you know, whether we do go partially legally on that section of that block or even making it limited to parking little parts in the front, you know, six AM to five PM, wherever that might be in that specific area, depending on what the city wanna do.
I do have thoughts.
Can you, can we put it back? Because I think it's right next to where they pull in, isn't it, that they're having trouble with?
Maybe we can do that.
It's between the iron or tree?
There's sixteen to twenty.
Would it be possible to make it some kind of a loading and unloading zone? So that there's only like five or ten-minute parking while people are unloading their kids? I mean, I'm just spitballing. I don't know.
First ordinance may be best best option.
Or between some sign or something.
Yeah. The uh ordinance sixteen thirty, those are the ones that restrict parking in certain areas. And they're well-defined areas as to where people are allowed to park and not park.
I mean, I understand that the people that live there, it's convenient for them to park there and then just walk across.
But they don't have any other place.
Well, I was looking at it when I was coming here tonight, and I don't, if they could, instead of parking right there, they could just park a little bit further up the street and then they'd have to walk a little, like a half a block to get to the house. But there was enough parking to park about three or four vehicles on the same side of the street. Um, just a little bit further up from the house, in front of church.
On their side of the street.
Um, no, on the corner of Winthrop and um and uh South Summit, um on the opposite side. So, either next to the Episcopal Episcopal Church or across the street to the east side, um going up uh next to that house. They have like a privacy fence.
Mm-hmm.
And then as long as they didn't park all the way up on the corner, then it wouldn't obstruct people's views pulling out from Winthrop. So, it just seems like if they could just work with us a little bit, we wouldn't have to necessarily um change an ordinance or or uh, you know, change anything if they just.
Like you said, they did well for a couple of weeks and then they went back, you know.
And they already park in front of the church and on the south room side.
Do they really?
Yeah.
Oh, I I hadn't seen or parked probably down there. I just I just saw it parked directly across from their house.
I just don't want us to wait until somebody gets in.
Right.
So, we need to do something. Um.
I mean, is that even an option, like making it some kind of a loading zone or so then people could still park there to unload their children?
Do we have a loading?
We do, but I did not print that most.
That would probably be better.
Yeah, I mean.
Because you can't do the two-hour parking, because that's not recognizing the main street, you know.
Yeah.
I don't think it's wrong about it, I should say.
I mean, do we got the right color paint at the city shop so we can paint the curb different color?
Yep.
I'm trying to find it, guys. Be patient working, please.
I mean, we can make it. We don't want to be completely off-accessible for parents to drop their kids on. So, what we could do is we can make it straight there. Sign, type on the sign, ask to, and call by, say, parents hand load and unload children if this doesn't function. Because it's, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the problem isn't the parking in the the actual parking lot, right? It's when people come in to pull out and they can't see coming off, right?
And and some of them do pull and park in the front and then they come around where the kids run out. Um, but when they come around the car, there's that issue too, because they can't see.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's like six to six, isn't it, or six to nine?
They, I think they come in pretty early in the morning. I I thought, Miranda, that's something about them being there at five thirty.
Typically, they're dropping people off when they're dropping kids off when they go to work. That's at six AM.
Six AM.
And you'll see them dropping off, they can drop one day. So, it's not anyone else. This is the guy.
Yeah, the time.
There's increased traffic here early in the morning after work the other day.
Hey, Greg, how far up uh on the west side of South, I remember he's not working today, on the west side of South Summit, how far up does that existing little parking go?
Goes up to Walcott.
To Walcott?
From Walcott to um basically Highway sixteen.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Do you just extend it?
Another half a block at all?
The existing little parking on that one side.
Sure. The discussion is being able to drop the kids off in threshold. So, technically, they couldn't stop and drop them off unless you make it loading and loading.
Right.
Well, I could remember. I don't know why I have this. Well, I know why I have this, because we've cleared. It's no.
The road actually narrows from Walcott to down by the old name's Texaco. So, they basically took out the parking lane all the longer section and let me stop the traffic, stop traffic from parking on that side. Yeah.
And that's just specifically listed in your ordinance, but it carries one of the little parking areas.
It is, yeah.
Well, if it's just by motion, wouldn't be a good thing as it affects us to that area. We have to amend, probably restricted. I mean, you can actually just do it by motion, but we still would need to, still be assigned there.
How long does it take to get it done?
For four to six weeks.
Okay.
Depending on availability of materials, of course. It could be as long as twelve weeks, so.
So, Greg.
But if they're, if they're parking on the street to Little One, you still got the problem.
Right.
So, if you eliminate the parking on that curb.
Yep.
Then the people can use that, utilize the parking lot and get in and out safely. Because if you if you let cars park there, still, it's gonna be the same as those people parking there. And then getting in and out, they're gonna have to look and I've done it before. You miss a car coming and you pull out in trouble. But if you if you eliminate the parking on that curb, just no parking.
Come on the street.
Then the people can unload their kids in the parking lot, in their designated parking lot, and that way they can exit and enter safely.
I think that would be the best.
So, then you could just put your two signs up, no parking between signs.
And we actually.
Pay curvy off.
We have more parking signs right now.
No parking.
We keep those on hand.
Yeah.
Well, so if you can get a.
Is it a big enough problem for the parents that come in? Do they always park there in the morning on that street to on that side of the street to load their kids?
More than going through the parking lot, did I notice?
Okay, well, I mean, either way, it'll just have to go for the parking.
Right, exactly. I mean, they might park on the street because it's convenient, but I mean, they don't have to change.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if you do that, and if they start parking in front of that church, then where are we gonna be? I mean, they're, the church is gonna start complaining because it's parked, cars parked there when those people are in the church.
Or suburbs are gonna complain, or whatever, right, exactly. Well, I say that um that we do just to paint the curb yellow and no parking.
I agree.
Yeah, so if someone wants to make a motion that there's no parking from Little Ones to where would we?
Um, it would probably be better to list the street, so West, Western Walcott to the alley. How do I have to fit it in that one section? West Walcott Street would be the street you'd start at.
And then go down South Summit to?
Uh, trying to find one that would be a good example. There's one in here that's an example for uh by yes way. And it only goes to the alley of where the post offices. It goes from the alley of the post office on South Summit to Main Street.
So, it's uh, what, does that alley? What would we say, the alley by the church? I mean, the alleys don't have names.
Under that section sixteen thirty-three, it's just if it's painted yellow and by motion. So, I get that if it's stated in there, it helps people understand if they're looking at the ordinances, which I don't think that happens as often as we think, but um.
So, they reference, they reference the alley of block nine, intersection of block nine.
Okay.
So.
Is what they do when they when they reference the one for uh yes way, yes way.
And so, is that alley nine?
It's a, that alley is in block nine. I don't remember what block that is.
So, we have a motion?
That's all good. Put no parking on that curb.
Check it.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, um, will we, will Greg let us know when you think you guys have enough?
Yeah, I'll get a better definition of it too.
So, do we need coordinates number six by title?
I think it would be, it's good just to reference it, but it says by motion, you can designate it, so um I think it would be good to put, they'll get me wrong, Greg, I would move forward with it, but I think it would be good to name the exact. street and then the alley in terms of whether it be lot, I think you said lot as the last designation for the Yes Way Alley, correct?
Yeah.
Just so that the public knows that exactly where it is. I mean, they're gonna see the yellow curb, of course, but.
It'd be, it'd be number nine, sixteen thirty.
Block nine.
Is that what it said?
No, that was the other block. That was just an example.
Oh, oh.
Trying to find it.
Oh.
The original edition of Newcastle.
Uh, why he finds that? We can move on and we'll just re-motion as to the.
My question was about the back here, chicken ordinance though. Um, does it need its final reading since we just passed the motion? That kind of is reading, we don't need to read it by title or anything, make it official.
Well, the title is red, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Title is red. We don't have to read each section's title or anything. I just wanna make sure that.
So while they're looking at that, we'll move on to ordinance number thirteen, nineteen forty-nine, sixteen fifteen, riding upon sidewalk or roadway. Um, it was brought to, uh, the police committee, um, that this ordinance, uh, with us doing the bike path uh, may need to be amended. Um, the, it reads, no person shall ride or propel a bicycle upon any sidewalk except to across, uh, such sidewalk at crosswalks nor upon the road, roadway of any street or highway except in a careful and prudent manner and unless such person shall be capable of efficient control and operation of such bicycle. And this was ordinance number thirteen and it was written nineteen forty-nine. And if we're doing a bike path, um, this may need to be amended. So, and that bike path is from Morrissey down to the port entry, correct Greg?
Yes.
So how we?
So we need to amend it when the bike path is installed or we need to do it now? Cause it's gonna be a while before that bike path gets put in.
Yeah, but there's already bicycles and stuff on the existing bike path that's already burned down. Is what was brought to our attention. Am I missing something?
Where does it, the bike path currently, does it cross?
The bike path goes all the way to the elementary school and comes up the elementary to the roadway stop sign sixteen eighty-five. And it continues, um, all the way down to the port entry. Well, there's sidewalks, but. Um, and it's all the way down to the port entry. And then it's gonna, uh, when we start the bike path, it will go from, yeah, over the bike paths and all the way to the port entry. And then, uh, from the port entry to Morrissey is where the rest of the bike path is going.
We have eleven point two miles of pathways right now.
And people are riding bicycles on them, and that's what this.
But it's called bike path, isn't it?
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I don't know how it'd be designated as a street or a roadway or a highway, no, that's, that's the part that I'm a little tossed up on here.
And people are, people are planning to.
Some of it's a sign. Well, there's an ordinance that says you can't ride.
Okay.
Yeah.
So back in nineteen forty-nine, they must have been having a lot of pedestrian bicycle collisions?
Maybe the horses, I don't know. But it was just brought to our.
Need to update this ordinance.
So it was just brought to our attention and we can hand it over to, uh, queues to take this, so. Are we ready to keep going or did you find it?
Not yet.
Okay, moving on to number six, um. Okay, uh, number six, Curly Q's liquor license, um, so, uh, legal for Curly Q's liquor license. Notice is hereby given that on the fourteenth day of November two thousand twenty-two, the following Curly Q LLC, doing businesses Curly Q's Diner, located at two oh seven West Main in Newcastle, Wyoming, filed a restaurant liquor license, uh, restaurant license number five. Um, protest if there may be, there be any against the issue of this license will be heard at the hour of seven forty-five P M on Monday, December fifth, two thousand twenty-two in this Newcastle City Council Chamber, City Hall, ten West Warwick Street, Newcastle, Wyoming. And it was published November seventeenth, uh, the twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-two. So I apologize that I missed seven forty-five. I don't have my phone. So, um.
I think that we approve Curly Q's liquor license.
One second. Okay, we have a motion. In second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Just meet with, uh, the city hall and get the rest of the paperwork signed up.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Moving on to department head reports, uh, Public Works Supervisor, Greg Stumpf.
Any questions, your reports?
How's, uh, Chuck doing?
Good.
The other.
He's been helping get some lead easements, taking care of the need for some projects, uh, one at the landfill, one at South Summit, or, uh, excuse me, Delaware. So, um, anything started on a couple other funding, funding and projects.
Thank you for your help with that, Greg.
Oh, no problem. We're happy to do it.
So anybody have any questions?
The, I will note that, uh, Pagoon cleaning South East, we did go over slightly on our tonnage. It's gonna be about twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars extra that we had planned on, but we still should be able to cover it. For us to get that close with all the unknowns in that place was actually rather astonishing. Um, I would like to ask for streets community to discuss a couple unapproved roads that have come to that have come, people talking about. Preferably before the next council meeting so we can address it, address these roads as best we can.
I'm available the next couple of days, um, in the afternoon, uh, and I'm available next week.
Cause when are you, uh, when do you come back to town? Town?
I'm about to tell you late Saturday.
So probably next week.
Yeah, beginning of last week sometime.
So the twelfth? Monday the twelfth?
Does Monday the twelfth work for you?
Yeah, that should work, um, around four thirty.
That works for me.
Okay?
For you too?
Yep.
So, Paul's ready on it?
That's fine.
And I do have, I think, a description for you. Should be on South Summit on the western side. Between the intersection, South Summit Avenue and block twenty-three at the alley.
Someone would like to re-motion that?
I'd make that motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have.
We're talking about the parking again?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had to.
That's fine. Sorry.
Any further discussion?
What were you talking about?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Sorry. Anything further? Or is?
Is that?
Anything further?
No, nothing I have.
Any other questions for? Uh, moving on to, uh, police department, we have, uh, our new chief has arrived. Yay! We spent the day, uh, meeting the probation pool, DFS, uh, local, refinery, um, pretty much spent the whole day meeting, uh, entities that he will be working with. Um, so, we got that, and then tomorrow he's gonna be, um, standing with Melissa and dispatch, uh, for the day. And maybe more than one day, um, we'll see how that goes. Um, he, we met with, uh, the staff today, um, showed a good, a good feel and a good vibe from their new, uh, chief and.
What's that?
We're gonna work on that.
Good. Yes. Um, but yeah, so, so we got lots to do, um, and definitely know that you have the council's support, so.
Appreciate that.
Um, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, the total calls for service for the month of November was six hundred and fifty. Uh, calls for service through, uh, November twenty-second through today, um, there was a hundred and eighteen calls for service. Thirty-three of them were for the C S O and eighty-five for the P D. I don't think I have anything else at the moment, just that, um, we have a lot to paperwork and some stuff we gotta do and and learn and go from there. But, welcome.
Thank you.
Any questions for police department?
No, we're just happy to have you here, Chief.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to city attorney, Dublin here.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report. Uh, yes, um, Augen Driscoll's deed was signed and it is here for the mayor to sign as well as to be, uh, the check to be paid and to be recorded as soon as possible as they say.
That is a long time coming. Um, any questions for Mr. Hughes? Moving on to number four, city clerk treasurer, Stacy Harvey. Any standing committee reports? Any other business?
I have some other business, I don't matter. Um, I would like to move to, um, remove Mr. Greg James from the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. And how the position can be advertised.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion. In second, any further discussion?
Yeah, so I'm there, you know, typically these positions are not usually advertised, they're usually, uh, come through and, and appointed or applications kind of either sent to us and that they're interested in for the position. Who would never went out and solicited and say that these are the open and, and went through application process.
I think that that might be one of the problems, so, um, before that meeting, last meeting, I was completely unaware that there was even a vacancy.
Yeah, I didn't know it either.
Uh, so we were all blindsided with the fact that there was even a vacancy.
Yep.
And I don't really think, I think that's one of the problems with, uh, some of our, uh, local government, is that we just appoint people without, um, giving an adequate amount of, um, notification to other parties that may be interested or trying to drum up some kind of support other than just shooing somebody into a vacant position. So that's why I made this motion this evening.
I have a question, if we're gonna kinda put you on the spot there, Bruce, how does it work with the travel commission?
Uh, the travel commission, we just, you put it out there in the paper.
You put it out there?
Yeah, in the paper. It depends where, it could be, um, Upton, Newcastle, cause, you know, and county, cause it's representative for put it out in the paper saying, you know, anybody wishing, please, uh, uh, submit your paperwork. But, you know, it goes to you, so go to the Upton, uh, city council or the county commissioners at requesting to be put on board.
Because there's two from each, right?
Yes.
And what I mean by that is there's two from Upton, two from Newcastle, and two from county that are present.
Yeah, that's cause we're a joint powers board, so that function's a little different. So, but if nobody like us knew that there was, that Marvin Quinn, I mean, at least it gives somebody a chance to, there, or be interested in it and come forward, but, I mean, to me, it was just wham, it was done. And I didn't even know about it. I didn't know Marvin Quinn.
It caught me off guard and I voted in favor at the time, but then I immediately regretted my decision because I just don't think that it's fair just to shoot people into the position. Mr. James is more than welcome to apply for the position once it's run. And I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think that just appointing somebody like that is, is fair.
And maybe nobody will apply.
That's a problem we've had with the travel commission for years.
At least, at least somebody's got a chance.
Mr. James has a, uh, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Hughes.
You do realize that there's no statutory nor ordinance requirement for advertising any position?
I know, we've talked about this before when we appointed some other positions and, uh, and so just shooing people into the position seemed like the right thing to do, but I know a lot of your.
I thought I'd say that that was a shoo-in position. And for the last twenty-five plus years that I can recall, it's been very difficult. And in some cases, months go by before anyone is interested or shows any interest whatsoever.
Well, maybe if people know about the vacancy, then they might be interested in applying. So that is the reason that I made this motion this evening. So we'll see what kind of support we drum up. If there's no support, then I guess she'll be right back in there, Mr. James.
So is there any difference between that and somebody not being on the council? That's advertised. And people apply for that.
We're elected.
Not the person that's appointed.
Uh, last time we appointed a, a seat, we drew applications and we conducted interviews. So that seemed like the right way to handle it. That's how Lance got his seat.
So the advertisement would have to come from the city or, um, finding itself, but the city pays for it?
Doesn't have to just be advertised once or what do we?
There's, I mean, it's.
I mean, what do we do once?
Because we have to give other things. Because we have to give other things, is it just
There's no, there's no actual direction. Statute for at least picking would just be of discretion of the council as to how long and
Or if.
That's also true, Mr. James.
Any other discussion?
Well, I'd like to point out that it's nothing against Mr. James in this decision. I think we all agree on that, right?
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that. There's nothing against the person involved, it's just the position should be, we believe should be advertised.
And I'm just as guilty as I was, and I, I mean, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say yay. I was silent, like you pointed out, that's the same as a yes vote, but I intentionally didn't vote because, verbally, because I thought, and I, and I brought it up as soon as the meeting was over, that shouldn't this be advertised? And I, I was just asking the question.
Uh, what's the position that you're talking about?
Planning and zoning, being on the planning and zoning board.
Okay, and so you have a motion right now to remove who's there and then advertise for somebody to be on it? Wouldn't you maybe vote for them to be interim and then to have, uh, interviews and open application? So you don't remove somebody off of that in the meantime?
All right, stand by my motion. We'll, we'll conduct interviews. The position was vacant, um, and uh, it was, a letter was written. So the position can stay vacant until, um, we run the, uh, the ad for an adequate amount of time. So do I need to amend my motion to add the amount of time that I think that the ad should be run?
Um.
But I'd also discuss how long you guys want that to run, if you are thinking about doing this, and it is your motion, so.
I mean, I know, um, you, that a lot of us didn't know that Mark was, um, resigned from his position, um, but it was on the agenda that was sent out before our meeting the week, the week before. I just wanna make sure that that's due, because he sent it out on Friday, so.
But did it say there was, uh, there was, that Mark had quit? Like, it was open?
I don't, I don't recall ever, I check my email regularly, and I did, I don't ever see any traffic about there being a vacancy on the planning zoning commission.
No, just a letter from
So since we're still in the discussion phase, what is a fair amount of time to run an ad for a position vacancy?
How long do you guys wait for it?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
I was, that's what I was, that's the number that I was thinking of. So I would amend my motion that we remove Greg James from the planning and zoning commission and run an ad in the newspaper for two weeks, uh, to see what kind of applications we can generate.
Or letters of interest, whatever.
Yeah, interest. A second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? I guess, uh, would we have, well, planning and zoning, write up the article, or are we writing the article? Or the position? So are we gonna have, is it the city that's gonna write it, or the We're gonna have an ad in the paper? Or are we gonna have planning and zoning do that? Because the travel commission does theirs. I think
Ultimately, you guys can choose who it is, so I would assume the city, I don't like
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So we have four a's and one no. Okay. Okay, any other business? Um, do we have a motion to leave the regular session to enter into executive session? Uh, the Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, triple I contracts and the double I real estate?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.